This meeting of the township board to order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a roll call, please.
Trustee Wade?
Here.
Trustee Matuzak?
Here.
Trustee Kress?
Present.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Here.
Trustee King?
Present.
Treasurer Iello?
Present.
Clerk Meltzer here.
Okay. We have six items on the agenda. Madam Clerk, any additions, deletions?
No.
Okay.
We're good.
So, six items need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
I'll support.
Moved by trustee Matuzak, supported by trustee Wade. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Excuse me. A roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Matuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay. And for the purposes of a public service announcement, Clerk Meltzer.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Supervisor Gilliam, just so that we'll go through this again, I know some folks are a little confused about how to access our agendas and Board Packet, so if you go to clintont township dot com, very simple, it'll bring you to this site here, and once you get here, you can hover over Government, and you can just go to Board Meeting, I'm sorry, Agendas and Minutes, this is the second line down, scroll down to Agendas and Minutes, and find the date of the Board meeting, which today is the 24th?
No, keep going.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. March 3rd. Yeah, make sure you pick the right one. Or, and there's other ones, there's Budget Ways and Means, there's Planning Commission Meetings, if they haven't yet happened. I gotta get my glasses on. So, March 3rd, by clicking on Regular Board Meeting, you'll see the Regular Board Meeting Agenda here, and then under, with these paperclips underneath each Agenda item, gives you what the Board Packet includes, is in the form of what we call a backup information. So, that's how you access the Board Agenda and the Packet information supporting the Agenda items, and the Agenda is available to the public the Wednesday prior to every Board meeting, so we have transparency that has been enhanced under the leadership that we have now and prior. And then in addition to that, the Board Packet information is available Monday morning for the entire public, and they have the time to review it, and in contact us at any time to ask questions. All set.
Okay. That takes us to item number one, the Consent Agenda. Two items, minutes, and the bills.
Move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Been moved. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Moved by trustee Matuzak, supported by Treasurer Iello. A roll call, please.
Trustee Wade?
No, trustee.
I'm sorry, trustee Matuzak, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Iello, or Treasurer Iello.
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay. Item number two, introduction of applicant for the appointment to the Historical Commission.
Dear Board Members, there are four terms open on the Historical Commission. The Historical Commission holds terms of three years. The four terms are due to expire on June 30th, 2027. Attached for your review is an application for appointment for the following applicant, appointment Fred Drankowski, Drankowski, I'm sorry, for the Policy Guidelines, an invitation has been extended to the applicant to attend the March 3rd, 2025 Board Meeting, where an opportunity will be given to make a three-minute introduction. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter, sincerely, Paul Gilliam, Supervisor.
Mr. Drankowski, did you wish to address the Board?
Just briefly.
By all means. So, if we could have you come to the microphone, though, sir.
I'm Fred Drankowski. I've been a resident in the township since 1983. I've got a lot of time that I'd like to help out with, and I've had a chance to sit down with Jim Hungerford at the Historical Commission, to find out what he's doing and what needs he might have, and I feel that I could help him keep that operation going. They need extra hands. That's basically it.
Okay. All right. So, we have four terms open and one applicant, so it'd be my recommendation that we entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Drankowski this evening.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Kress, supported by trustee King. Any discussion? Seeing none? A roll call, please.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Matuzak?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Item number three, introduction of applicant for appointment to the Conservation Committee.
Dear Board Members, there are three terms open on the Conservation Committee. The Committee holds term of three years. The term, the three terms have an expiration date of November 30th, 2027. Attached for your review is an application for reappointment for the following applicant, Jessica Finch. Per the Policy Guidelines, an invitation has been extended to the applicant to attend the March 3rd, 2025 Board Meeting, where an opportunity will be given to make a three-minute introduction. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter, sincerely, Paul Gilliam, Supervisor.
I do not see Ms. Finch in, oh, there she is. Right there. Okay, by all means, please.
Do you need me to state my address, as I historically have done, as I stood at this lectern?
By all means, yes.
Sure. Jessica Finch, 23303 Lakewood Street. Good evening, members of the Township Board. It's been about five years since I last addressed this body, speaking on behalf of issues that mattered deeply to myself, my husband, myself, and our community. Today, I stand before you once again, this time as an applicant, for the Conservation Committee. My commitment to conservation and volunteerism began long ago, dating very many years ago, back to my days as a Girl Scout. Those early experiences instilled in me a lasting appreciation for environmental stewardship and community service. Since becoming a Clinton Township resident in 2015, I have sought meaningful ways to contribute. Some of my efforts, such as participating in spillway cleanups and different tree planting initiatives, were likely tied to this very Conservation Committee. Additionally, while outside of the Township, I actively supported a conservation and beautification project along Grashit, led by my husband in his role as a master gardener. For years, I have been encouraged to get involved in Township Committees, but due to work-related travel, I was unable to make a consistent monthly commitment. That changed last year, and with a more predictable schedule, I am now in a position to dedicate my time and energy to serving our community. I respectfully ask for your consideration to appoint me as a member of the Conservation Committee, where I would work to uphold its mission alongside of my neighbors in furthering those important initiatives. Should the Committee's seats be filled with, by other dedicated applicants, I will continue to seek opportunities to serve Clinton Township in any capacity that aligns with my skills and passion. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. So, there again, we have three terms open and one applicant, and it also sounds like we get a twofer on this one, because her husband's a master gardener. So, it would be my recommendation that we make the appointment this evening.
I'll support.
So, motion by?
I move.
Motion by trustee Matuzak, supported by trustee Iello. Any further discussion?
Just, if I may, mister?
By all means.
Supervisor, I always want to call him chairman. I haven't gotten past that yet. Welcome aboard. I am the Chair of the Conservation Committee. Our next meeting is March 13th, 6:00 PM, at the South Branch of the Clinton Library. Everyone's welcome to come.
I will be there, thank you.
All right. Well, great. See no further discussion, roll call.
Trustee Matuzak?
Yes.
Treasurer Iello?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay. And that takes us to item number four, Public Hearing, 2526 Township Budget, and we have Finance Director Mary Heine and Assistant Director Jessica, so another Jessica, it's a Jessica Knight.
It's a great name, yes.
Ladies, take it away.
Good evening. Tonight, Assistant Finance Director Jessica Leah and I will be presenting the proposed budget for the fiscal year that covers April 1st, 2025 through March 31st, 2026. It will include the major funds of the Township, with an emphasis on the general, police, fire, and water and sewer funds. The budget serves as a planning guide outlining the services being provided and how they will be funded in the upcoming year. It is a means of allocating financial and personnel resources, and continues our conservative spending approach while keeping the Township's commitment to providing high-quality, dependable services for our residents. As you know, Proposal A was established in 1994 to limit the annual increase in the taxable value of property in the state of Michigan. The limit was set at the lesser of the rate of inflation, or 5%. The rate of inflation was greater than 5% over the last two fiscal years, causing the inflation rate multiplier applied to taxable value to be limited to 5%. The higher-than-normal inflationary environment has begun to stabilize. As a result, the rate of inflation for the current year is 3.1%. This will impact the Township's tax revenues throughout the budget plan. In addition, new policies are being established at the federal level, which may impact availability of resources to fund projects. Therefore, it is imperative to control spending to minimize the potential effects of these uncertainties on Township operations and the services we can provide. The full-time personnel summary, which begins on page 60 of the budget document, details the number of staff assigned to each department by position for the past five years. All salary and fringe benefits are based on current contracts, assuming full employment in the proposed budget. During the March 31st, 2024 fiscal year, the Township's MERS Defined Benefit Pension Plan was closed to new hires. In its place, a 401A Defined Contribution Plan was established for general employers, employees hired by the Township on or after January 1st, 2024. Capital expenditures are proposed to replace aging equipment and infrastructure, and continue to address older items that were not replaced during the economic downturn that began in 2007. The Capital Outlay Detail section includes a list of capital outlay requested by department, beginning on page 64 of the budget document. The first fund presented will be the General Fund. The Township's largest revenue source in the General Fund is revenue sharing from the state of Michigan, making up approximately 45% of General Fund revenues. Constitutional revenue sharing, funded through state sales tax collections, is expected to decrease approximately $232,000 in the 2425 fiscal year. The state legislature continued the statutory city, village, and township revenue sharing program for the current fiscal year. The Township will receive the standard CVTRS payment, along with additional payments based on taxable value and population in the 2425 fiscal year, which will result in an increase in CVTRS payments of approximately $157,000. The state's initial projections for the upcoming year reflect a slight increase in revenue sharing payments for the 2526 budget. The General Fund 2526 revenue budget reflects the 3.1% increase in property tax revenues. Revenue received from cable franchise fees continues to decline with the decrease in cable subscribers. Interest rates are expected to decrease in the 2526 fiscal year, resulting in a decrease in interest income. Other revenue is reduced due to a reduction in grant revenue received and election reimbursements. The 2425 expenditure budget has been revised downward by approximately $6.1 million from the current budget. The decrease is due to positions left vacant during the year and delays of capital outlay projects, which have been transferred the 2526 budget year. In addition, public works revenue and Parks Department expenditures have been reduced to reflect the net cost to the Township of grant-funded projects undertaken with Macomb County. Departmental budgets for the 2526 budget year assume full employment and are showing increases due to contractual salary increases, an increase in the healthcare hard cap, pension contributions, and the inclusion of capital outlay expenditures. The proposed budget also includes additional contributions to the MERS pension system equivalent to the required contributions for the year, totaling $2.9 million in the General Fund. The actuarial report for retiree healthcare funding completed in September 2024 determined that no contribution was required for General Fund employees. As a result, no contribution is included in the proposed budget for General Fund. Now, I'll go through the highlights by department in the General Fund for departments with significant changes. The Supervisor's budget reflects the continuation of present staffing levels. Pension costs have been reduced, and the additional contributions to the MERS pension system have been eliminated, since all eligible department employees have opted out of MERS and are enrolled in the 401A plan. The 2526 Clerk's budget for part-time salaries, election workers, overtime, postage, and printing and publications have been decreased due to this being a non-election year. Repairs and maintenance includes the yearly election equipment maintenance costs. Education and training is budgeted at $28,300. Salary and fringe benefits in the 2425 budget have been reduced because the cost of the election coordinator position that was originally budgeted was vacant for a portion of the year. Part-time salaries have been reduced to the actual amount spent for the election. Election workers have been increased to the actual amount spent, due in part to new early voting requirements. The Building and Grounds budget reflects the addition of a custodial maintenance worker approved by the Board in 2024, bringing present staffing levels to four custodial maintenance workers. The 2526 budget includes capital outlay totaling $1,950,000, including the cost of projects originally budgeted in the 2425 budget that have been carried over to the 2526 budget. The 2526 Unallocated Cost budget includes a transfer to the Downtown Development Authority of $45,000 to provide funds for the facade improvement program. The budget also includes transfers to the Capital Improvement Fund of $500,000 for infrastructure projects, and $1.1 million for technology upgrades. For the 2425 budget, the transfer to the Downtown Development Authority and the transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund for technology have been reduced to the actual costs incurred. The 2526 Public Works budget reflects the continuation of present full-time staffing levels. Part-time salaries has been budgeted to allow for 24 seasonal workers. Revenue includes $580,000 related to a grant for the Clinton River Water Trail, and $248,300 to pay for play equipment at Joy Park and Prince Brewery Park. Capital outlay is budgeted at $145,000. The 2425 SMART budget reflects the reduction in costs related to the transfer of the SMART Bus Program to Richmond Lennox EMS effective July 1st, 2024. The corresponding revenue from the SMART credits was also transferred to Richmond Lennox. The 2526 Requested Budget reflects the cost of recreational bus charters and bus tickets totaling $43,500, which will be paid for with SMART credits. The budget also assumes the continuation of the agreement with Richmond Lennox, including the transfer of $215,000 of current-year SMART municipal and community credits, 100% of the SMART specialized services credits, and $100,000 of unused prior-year credits. The 2526 Recreation and Senior Center budgets show an increase in computer costs to provide funds for new recreation software to track program registrations. The Recreation budget includes $25,000 in capital outlay for a printer and a pickup, and the Senior Center budget includes $15,000 in capital outlay for a copy machine. The 2526 Community Relations and Media Services budget reflects the continuation of present staffing levels. Capital outlay is budgeted at $20,000 for wireless boardroom microphones. The 2425 Parks budget has been reduced due to the delay of capital outlay projects that have been deferred to the 2526 year, and to reflect the net cost to the Township of grant-funded projects undertaken with Macomb County. The 2526 Parks budget includes funds for maintenance of the bike path along Metro Parkway, in accordance with a maintenance agreement with the Huron-Clinton Metro Authority that expires in March 2030. Repairs and maintenance includes the cost of water and dechlorination for the splash pad. Capital outlay has been budgeted for various projects totaling $1,563,000. As part of the budget process, we prepare a three-year projection for the general, police, and fire funds. Included here is a list of the assumptions used in the preparation of the budget and the projections. Tax revenues are projected to increase 3.1% in the 2526 budget, increase 2.5% in the 2627 projection year, and increase 2% for the remaining projection years. Salary and fringe benefit increases are based on current contracts. The Public Act 152 Hard Cap for Healthcare Costs has been applied to all full-time positions in the budget. The projections assume a 5% per year increase to the hard cap limit. Retiree healthcare contributions are equal to the actuarially determined contribution. Additional retiree healthcare contribution equal to the required contribution for the Police Fund for 2026, 27, 28, and 29. Additional contribution to the Police and Fire Pension System equal to the required contribution for 2026, and 50% of the required contribution for 2027, 28, and 29. Additional contributions to the MERS Pension System equal to the required contributions for 2026, 27, and 28. Inflationary increases in all other expenditures range from 1% to 5%. The budget and the projections assume compliance with truth and taxation. When looking at the projection, there are a couple of things to focus on: revenues over expenditures and available fund balance. To gauge the health of the fund, we like to see revenues exceeding expenditures and fund balance to be at least 20% of the following year's expenditures. For the requested 33126 budget, in the first two years of the projection, expenditures exceed revenues in the General Fund. Included in total expenditures are the additional MERS contributions shown at the bottom of the page. The Board has prudently elected to make additional contributions to fund the liabilities. The projections assume the additional contributions will continue to be made through the 33128 fiscal year, after which we currently expect the unfunded liability will be paid, and we can return to making just the required contribution. The projections also include capital outlay purchases that are necessary to replacing aging vehicles and equipment and buildings improvements, and transfers to the Capital Improvement Fund for infrastructure projects and for technology improvements. Available fund balance and fund balance as a percent of the following year's expenditures are still decreasing each year through the 33128 fiscal year, but the decrease is mainly attributed to the additional MERS contributions. Revenues are projected to exceed expenditures in the 33129 fiscal year. This would indicate that the changes implemented over the last couple of years are working to stabilize the fund. Fund balance as a percent of the following year expenditures is over the 20% target in the requested budget and throughout the projection, but before additional projects are undertaken or capital outlay purchases requested, all expenditures should be reviewed and long-term costs carefully evaluated to determine if the fund can afford the project. The 2425 Property Tax Revenue budget in the Police Fund has been increased to reflect the actual tax revenues billed. Additional revenue is expected to be received from grants, overtime reimbursements, and interest income. The 2425 Expenditure budget reflects the increase to the Sergeant's Lieutenant's pay rates in accordance with the new contract. Overtime increased due to the vacant positions during the year and additional special events and task force coverage. The Clothing Bank budget was increased to pay for replacement of bulletproof vests and the additional clothing costs for new hires. Capital outlay was reduced to the expected cost of the projects. The 2526 budget reflects the anticipated 3.1% increase in property tax revenue. In addition, transfers to the Police Fund from the DEA Task Force Fund and the Drug Forfeiture Fund have been budgeted at $200,000 and $150,000 respectively. The 2526 Expenditure budget continues to reflect 95 sworn officers. An Office Clerk II position has been added to the budget to assist with maintaining the accreditation status and to provide additional support in the Records Division. Part-time salaries has been reduced to reflect a reduction in the number of cadet positions. The contribution to the Police and Fire Pension System for the 2526 fiscal year totals $4,603,000, an increase of approximately $165,000 from the prior year. To increase the funding level of our retirement plans, the Police Fund budget includes an additional contribution to fund retiree healthcare of $1,556,900, an additional contribution to the Police and Fire Pension System of $4,603,000, and an additional contribution to the MERS Pension System of $203,000. An administrative fee to the General Fund of $847,100 has been included in the budget for the administrative functions provided, including accounting, human resources, civil service, information technology, and management. The transfer to subsidize the 41B Court Bond Payment is budgeted at $580,000. Capital outlay has been budgeted at $500,000 for vehicles and renovations to the gun range. Looking at the Police Fund projections, we once again focus on the revenues over expenditures line and the available fund balance line. In the requested budget and the three-year projection, expenditures exceed revenues and available fund balance is declining, mainly because of the additional retirement plan contributions that are necessary to increase the funding level of the plans. We've made substantial progress toward funding the retiree healthcare liability and the MERS pension liability. We now need to focus on increasing the funding level of the Police and Fire Pension System, and have included additional contributions to that plan, starting in the 2526 budget year. Fund balance as a percent of the following year expenditures is above the recommended 20% level throughout the projection, but is declining rapidly. As a result, before any additional projects are undertaken or capital outlay purchases requested, all expenditures and long-term costs of proposed projects should be carefully reviewed to determine if the fund can afford the project. The 2425 Property Tax Revenue in the Fire Fund has been increased to reflect the actual tax revenues billed. The 2526 Requested Budget for the Fire Fund reflects the estimated 3.1% increase in property tax revenues. Additional revenue is expected to be received in each year from interest income. The 2526 Expenditure budget reflects the increase in staffing to 76 fire personnel, including an additional fire inspector that was approved by the Board in 2024. The annual required contribution to the Police and Fire Pension System for the 2526 fiscal year totals $3,427,000, an increase of $31,000. The proposed budget includes additional contributions to the Police and Fire Pension System and the MERS Pension System, equivalent to the required contributions for the year, totaling $3,427,000 and $39,400 respectively. The actuarial report for retiree healthcare funding indicated that the funding level for Fire Fund employees is high enough that an additional contribution is not required in the 2526 fiscal year. Education and training is budgeted at $68,700. An administrative fee to the General Fund of $624,200 has been included in the budget for the administrative functions provided. Capital outlay includes $460,000 for various building and parking lot improvements. In order to accumulate funding for capital purchases of very large and costly vehicles and equipment, the 2526 budget includes a transfer from the Fire Fund to the Fire Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, in the amount of $985,000. Capital outlay in the Fire Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund is budgeted at $1,850,000 for staff vehicles, two engines, and equipment. The remaining balance will be retained in the fund for purchases in subsequent years. Additional transfers into this fund in the future will be made based on availability of funds. For the Fire Fund projections, revenues exceed expenditures, including the additional Police and Fire Pension System contribution and MERS contributions. Available fund balance remains healthy and consistent throughout the duration of the projections, and the percentages above the recommended 20% level indicating the fund is structurally sound. The Capital Improvement Fund provides for the purchase of technology and general capital-related items. The 2425 budget includes $1 million of grant funds received from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and $179,900 in donations received for the inclusive playground. Technology improvements totaling $262,000 were made during the year, which were paid for by a transfer from the General Fund. The 2526 budget for technology-related items can be found in the Capital Outlay section of the budget document, totaling $1,115,600, which will be paid for by a transfer from the General Fund. Included in this total is the annual cost for licenses, security, equipment replacements and upgrades, $500,000 for the phone system replacement, and $300,000 for switch replacements. An additional transfer from the General Fund of $500,000 will be made to add to funds previously set aside to be used for infrastructure projects. A portion of the funds will be used for the projects listed in the Capital Outlay section of the budget book. I will continue with the Senior Housing Fund. And the 2526 budget for the Senior Housing Fund reflects an increase in maintenance fee revenue and carport revenue in accordance with proposed rate increases. The agreement with the management company expired in December 31st, 2017, and has continued on a month basis, with the management fee remaining at $84,000 per year. Effective April 1st, 2025, the management company has requested a 2% increase in the employee compensation fee to provide raises to development employees. Capital outlay has been budgeted for various improvements to the facility, and for replacement of flooring, countertops, and fixtures totaling $125,000, as well as $284,000 for carpeting, paving, and landscaping projects. Revenues for the water and sewer treatment remained consistent with amounts budgeted during the 2425 fiscal year. Water and sewer treatment revenues for the 2526 year are based on the projected figures determined with the rate model. The estimated cost of water is primarily based on the fixed and variable charges from the Great Lakes Water Authority. The estimated cost for wastewater treatment is based on the fixed monthly fees charged by the Great Lakes Water Authority and Macomb and Oakland Interceptor Drainage Districts. At this time, we have not received final information on rate increases for the upcoming year, and have kept the monthly cost increase consistent with prior years. The budget includes 75% of the cost of the GIS specialist position, which is shared with the GIS department. The 2526 budget includes the additional contribution to fund retiree healthcare equivalent to the required contribution of $505,000. The budget also includes the additional contributions to the MERS Pension System equivalent to the required contributions. Computer costs includes upgrades and support costs for the Neptune 360 AMI system, which provides automated data collection for meter reads and cloud-based software and storage. It also includes email security, Office 365 renewals, and a firewall replacement. The amount budgeted- The amount budgeted in the 25-26 year is $186,000. The water and sewer division is continuing with the program to TV and clean the sewer system throughout the township. Repairs and maintenance includes $200,000 in the event of emergency repairs are needed to the sections of sewer pipe cleaned during the year. The budget also includes the cost of water meters being replaced as part of the water meter replacement program, lift maintenance, and rebuilding of manhole risers. Additional preventive maintenance projects are planned in the 25-26 budget year. An administrative fee to the general fund of $1,245,800 has been included in the budget for the administrative functions provided. Payment in lieu of taxes has been increased by 3.1% in accordance with the anticipated increase in taxable value. A list of proposed construction projects totaling $12,800,000 is included on page 58 of the budget document. These projects include improvement to water and sewer lines and lift station maintenance. Capital outlay items totaling $1,035,000 have been proposed. Estimated debt service costs for the outstanding bonds have been included in the budget. The balance outstanding on bonds issued by the township as of May 31, 2025 will be approximately $7.6 million. Total debt service for the township issues bonds is budgeted at $1.14 million. The balance outstanding on the bonds currently issued through the interceptor drainage districts as of March 31, 2025 will be approximately $40.6 million. The total debt service for these bonds is budgeted at $4.26 million. Additional projects are expected to be undertaken by the OMID and MID Drainage Districts in the upcoming year, which may result in the issuance of additional bonds. This concludes our presentation, and we are now open for any questions.
Okay, first from the board. Questions, discussion items?
I just want to thank you for such a great presentation.
Trustee Kress.
Can you tell me what the cable TV fees are? What exactly is that? There's a line item in here?
So, we receive franchise fees from each of the cable providers that offer cable services within the township. We have longer than I've been here.
All right, and one more question. The state revenue sharing, is that pretty much a constant? Because I see it's going down a little bit. It used to be 11.5, and now it's, well, it's 11.5 again, but is that a constant?
It is not constant. It changes every year based on what the budget is.
How's that, do you know how it's calculated, just roughly? Give me the abbreviated version of how they delegate the monies.
So, part of it is based on sales tax collections, and I don't know how they allocate it. And then the other portion is statutory, and that, we seem to find different ways to allocate that each year. This year, they've added a couple of things based on, what was it, taxable value? And, trying to remember what they were, population, I think. Additional payments based on taxable value and population. We got our first one just the other day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Property tax revenue.
Yes.
It increases, why? Is it assessed value? Is it projections, or what exactly?
It's based on taxable value, the increase in taxable value, which is limited. And this year, it's limited to 3.1%.
And next year?
My guess, yeah, whatever inflation is.
It's tied to the CPI.
Yeah.
Okay.
The consumer price index, the rate of inflation.
Yes.
Okay. Does it ever roll backwards?
Oh, yeah, it did. 2008 through 11, I think it was, we lost 25% over those years.
Does it adjust that fast in our tax collection?
It doesn't come back up that fast because it's limited to the 5%. What do you mean?
No, if it goes down.
Yes.
Does it adjust immediately?
Yes.
So...
That year, we collect whatever percent less. One year, I think it was 8%.
Let me jump in here.
Okay, please, treasurer, ma'am.
So, what happens is that if housing values are going up, right? They're generally going up faster than the rate of inflation. So, that creates a spread. You still have your assessed value, but the rate of taxable value, so assessed value goes up with the market conditions. The taxable value can only go up at the rate of inflation. So, 5% or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. What that does is when the market factors are, housing values are going up, there creates spread between those two figures. So, then, when, if the market goes down, what happens is you could have a situation where the value of your home can actually go down, but your taxes can still go up until that spread is closed. And so, what you saw after the housing crisis in 2008 is there was a lot of spread between assessed value and taxable value. Once assessed value dropped enough to close the gap between those two figures, then you saw taxes actually go down. Now, the other way the taxes can go down is the Headley Amendment, which then says as your community grows, then you have to roll your rate back. So, taxes are a reflection of two things, the rate of the millage and the value. Times those two things together. So, for instance, as Headley rolls our rate back, general fund of the township was at 1 mil. It's been rolled back to 0.82, Mike?
0.7.
Yes, it's now 0.7978, something to that effect.
General fund this year is 0.7887.
So, what was 1 mil is now 0.78 mils. So, the rate has been rolled back, but the taxable value goes up at the rate of inflation. That's the short answer.
All right. As you see where I'm heading, I'm looking, I'm inquiring about relief for our taxpayers as far as property taxes. So, the amount of this budget doesn't necessarily affect the property taxes because it goes on assessment, correct?
Well, the budget doesn't have anything to do with it.
No, I'm just saying that people at home, if they thought we slashed our budget, would that reduce their property taxes?
No.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, no.
Do separate things. So, and I think it's also important to point out that the revenue sharing in the general fund is the biggest source of our revenue that comes in.
Yes.
The actual tax dollars that come in off that 0.79 is the smaller amount up there.
Yep.
And, but if you look at police and fire, which are specific to the millage rates, those are almost entirely tax-supported. So, when people are paying their bill, for instance, when they're paying the summer bill, not one penny is kept here at the township. Our money comes in, in the winter collection. And that is the township's general fund, as well as the police millages, the FIRE millages. And then the water and sewer millages are supported by water rates.
Right.
The other things we don't have any control over, we simply collect them on behalf of those other taxing authorities.
So, that's why when we talk about available fund balance specifically in the police and FIRE fund, when you look at the projection here, we, you know, property taxes, or, yeah, property tax revenue for next year is estimated at $28 million, but we're not going to start collecting that until December. Basically, we don't get any until January. But the fiscal year starts April 1st. So, we have to pay bills from April 1st through December before we get a dime of new revenue coming in. So, that's why that available fund balance at the bottom is so critical. Fund balance might be $37 million, but what's available when you take out nine months of expenditures is only 16 million, which is not huge in the size of our police fund.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Wade.
Paul, with the inflation rate that you base taxes on, you said it was 3.5%?
3.1.
3.1, okay. Is there a certain date that you snatched that figure from? In other words, is like April 1st?
That's put out by the state. We don't pick it. That's put out by the state.
The state does?
Yeah.
Okay, and the other question I had was with the police and FIRE pension fund, the monies that you put in there, is that a percentage by the FIRE and a percentage by the police?
Yes.
And does it go by personnel, or does it go by how many people are in the system? How do you?
So, there's an actuarial valuation that's done every year, and they tell us based on the actuarial calculations the amount we have to invest. And it's tracked separately for police and for FIRE.
Okay, and just a follow-up question. You talked about like a position not being filled and there being a savings because obviously you didn't have to pay another employee. Would that money go into like an overtime fund, or does that money just sit in a pot?
So, it stays in the fund. So, for example, in the police fund, when they have vacant positions, the money wasn't paid out in salaries. Overtime was higher, so some of it was paid out in overtime. But whatever wasn't paid stays in the police fund for future expenses. It's part of that fund balance.
Okay, so they didn't fill a couple of positions, overtime costs get higher, but you can backfill it with this money? Because you didn't hire those, okay.
Yes.
Yes, but we don't reflect it in the budget right away until we kind of have a sense as to what that number is, right?
Correct, yes.
And then we'll do a budget amendment at that time to increase the overtime budget if the salary amounts weren't paid out as projected.
And is that because they come out of two different funds, one being an overtime fund and one being?
Well, it's all one fund, but different accounts, yes.
Accounts, okay.
Yes, that's why. The overtime amount that's budgeted, we have to make sure there's enough money that's in the overtime budget to cover overtime costs. Even if one of the other accounts is under budget, we have to make sure there's enough money in the overtime budget. So, that's why you'll see them come to the board to request an increase.
Okay.
So, just a real...
Trustee King.
Thank you. So, just a real-time example, like when we review like the overtime budget for our firefighter group.
Yep.
To Mr. Wade's point, you all typically, we approve that budget, we will review it, and that overtime expenditure, we'll review it and approve it or reject it or what have you. But you could, depending upon the timing of it, go back into that area of personnel if they're short, if they haven't fulfilled positions, that accrual you could apply to that overtime, correct? But is there?
Well, the board has to approve it. And we can't just take money out of the salaries line and put it to overtime without the board approving it.
Sure. Is there a time period where you typically will make that true up?
So, we watch it, especially this time of year because most of the time it doesn't get to that point until we're getting close to now. So, we keep an eye on it. We talk with the chiefs, the respective chiefs, and they keep an eye on it, and that's why Chief Gallagher, there's another, there's a later item on this agenda requesting an overtime adjustment.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes, and that is not in these numbers, so.
Supervisor? Trustee Metuzik.
I got it right this time.
That's good.
First of all, I really, you guys have done an amazing job putting this together. This is a tremendous amount of work, and I really appreciate that. And I appreciate our department heads who really have taken to heart holding the line on their budgets. This is not a budget with a giant increase in any department anywhere. So, I really appreciate that. I want to talk a little bit about pension obligations.
Okay.
We obviously incur obligations when we have employees, firefighters, police officers retire. We have promised them a certain amount in pension and retiree healthcare.
Yes.
And many communities have really gotten in trouble with that because they have not adequately funded that.
Correct.
And it's not that at every moment we have to pay out everything in the fund to every person. But I think some communities are going to be in pretty serious trouble in the future because they have not made adequate payments. And so, the wisdom of this board before I got here was to start making double payments or payment and a half. Can you talk a little bit about that and what that means in terms of how much we are funded in each of those?
So, this is the first time we've proposed making additional contributions to the police and FIRE pension system. They were, the funding level was higher, and it has steadily declined. But we have made the additional contributions to the retiree healthcare fund and to the MERS pension system, which has brought the funding level, I have that too. Somewhere in here. So, as of 12/31/23, which is the last time that MERS did their evaluation, the funding level was 80%.
So, we have funded 80% of our obligation?
Correct.
That's great.
Yep, and then the retiree healthcare was 97% funded, which is fantastic. That's where most communities are getting into bigger trouble is that when they offered that retiree healthcare, they paid it, it was called Pay-as-you-go. They never set anything aside. They didn't fund the liability as it was being incurred. And we've taken steps, kudos to the board, to make sure that there's funding set aside so that the liabilities are caught up to date.
And where are we with the police and FIRE?
At 3/31/2024, we were just under 70%, 69.82. But like I said, it's been going down because there were some changes to assumptions that were made.
It depends on what figures you use.
Okay, so I can tell you, the GASB figures, they were 67.15. So, yeah, that all depends on the smoothing, and it gets complicated, way beyond my knowledge.
Yeah, I get it. I just know that municipalities get in trouble all the time because they have not adequately funded.
Correct, yes. Yeah, and the state requires it. So, if we got below 60% in the pension fund, we have to develop a plan for how we're going to get out of it. And you have to submit the plan to the state, and they have to review it and say if it's good enough. So, we don't want that situation.
We don't want that situation.
No, no.
All right, again, thank you for the work putting the budget together and for the budget workshop that we all had an opportunity to ask a lot of questions at.
Yes.
So, if I could, kind of on the same, you know, track that we are on here, we started pre-funding the retiree healthcare obligation, right? So, we set that money aside.
Yes.
Then, the actuaries come in. They determine what our required contribution is, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so for how many years now have we been doubling that retiree healthcare contribution? It's at least five or six.
Retiree healthcare since the 3/31/2016 fiscal year, so going on 10 years?
So, eight.
Yeah.
Eight years.
Yeah, well, with 25, it would be going on 10, isn't it?
Going?
I don't know. We did it in 16. I'd have to count on my fingers.
All right.
For finance instructor, to count on my fingers. So, yeah, it's getting close to 10 years.
Okay, so for 10 years, we've been able to double that required contribution, and we've gotten that fund to the 97%.
Correct.
Which means we have enough money set aside to meet that future obligation when everybody who's currently in the plan is going to retire.
Yes, as of now, yes.
Okay, so then MERS, there's always some confusion about this, but MERS is the pension system for the state of Michigan that we can access. And those are our general fund employees and our water and sewer. So, kind of non-police and FIRE.
Correct, everybody that's not police and FIRE, yes.
Okay, and so, we're projecting, that was low. We do not control the investments there.
Not at all.
That's connected in with the state and a bunch of other municipalities. And when they did their actuarial figures, they realized that they were at a funding percentage that was significantly lower than what they were comfortable with and certainly what we were comfortable with. So, we were doubling those contributions as well.
Yes, since March 31, 2019 fiscal year.
Okay, so what are we doing in this budget for MERS?
It is doubled.
It is doubled.
Yes, and through, for this budget, and then 2027 and 2028. And based on our projections right now from MERS, I think that we'll be okay at that point, that we can just go back to the required contribution. We're not going to get rid of contributions, but we won't have to double any longer. As of now, that's what it looks like.
Okay.
So, but we have them do calculations and project forward every year just to see, to make sure we're on track and see when we'll be able to eliminate that double. Oh, that's true, yeah, and there's no new employees going in.
Right.
Anybody hired after January 1, 2024 goes into the 401A Defined Contribution Plan instead of a Defined Benefit Plan.
Okay, so that's actually a double-edged sword, right? Because you don't have anybody that's paying into it right now. So, that means your required contribution is going higher.
Well, they calculate based on a flat dollar amount for us now because it's not based on people, it's not based on current payroll, it's based on a dollar amount that's needed to fund it.
Okay.
So.
All right, and then turning our attention to police and FIRE.
Yes.
We're seeing that the portion of FIRE was healthy. We're meeting the required contribution there.
Are we talking healthcare or pension?
Pension.
Pension. Pension of, for both police and fire, we are doubling.
We're doubling.
Yes, they both, that whole fund is underfunded, yes.
Okay.
So both are doubling.
So we know what the required is, we're adding an equal amount.
Correct.
All right, and then there's one of them that we're scaling back on.
Healthcare, retiree healthcare for fire.
Healthcare, so we're doing the double contribution in this budget.
In police, but not in fire.
Okay, that's the one that.
That's the one, yep.
All right, and then we are cutting that to halftime.
Yes.
So one and a half times.
For, for pension, that's what we're doing going forward. For police and fire pension, we're doubling in 3/31/26. And then throughout the projection years, we're making an additional half contribution.
Okay.
For retiree healthcare, for the fire fund, we're just making the regular contribution. For the police fund, we're still doubling. I'm not quite, maybe through the projection and then I think the police fund will be okay.
Okay. And would you say that one of the biggest hits to the police fund is this drop in the court revenue that's coming in?
It is a big hit, yes.
So when the court, because it's all part of the criminal justice system, right?
Yep.
So that is part of that budget. When the court was seeing revenues exceeding their expenses, those dollars were going into the police fund.
Correct, yep.
Now that we're seeing declines in that court revenue through various things. Court reform, there's been a drop in ticket revenue combined in Mount Clemens and Harrison Township. We are now a bigger share of that overall deficiency.
Yes.
In their funding. And I think we're 72%, maybe 73?
72 or 73, yeah.
And so when that revenue is down, we, all three of us, Mount Clemens, Harrison Township, Clinton Township, has to cover that shortfall.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And so I see that that was quite a drop in this budget. It was like $700,000 last year, it's like around $500,000.
$580,000, I think, this year, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, the biggest reason for that is the court was able to cover all of the interest in the bond payment. So all the three communities are covering is the principal portion of the bond payment.
Okay, and so there's a board that really makes those decisions called the Court Management Council. One of the things that was in the agreement between our three communities was they had to have a million-dollar building fund. And recently, the board, I think.
Yes.
Trustee Wade, they dropped that to $500,000. And so that revenue is available to meet the bond payment and some of the interest. So there'll be less of a shortfall. Okay. And now let's talk about debt.
Okay.
Because debt is a huge thing for a lot of communities. We do not have a lot of debt.
We do not.
Where the debt occurs is debt beyond our control.
Correct.
In other words, so when we buy Great Lakes water, it goes through their system and then connects into our system. Our sewer system is then connected into the Great Lakes water.
Yes, the interceptors, yep.
So those drain funds require maintenance.
Yes.
And those big systems that are actually regional, not necessarily just Clinton Township, were a certain percentage of, we're like, I think the interceptor, we're like 20% of the interceptor.
I think it's closer to 25, it's in that area, yep.
Okay, so that is debt that's issued by the county, particularly the county public works office, and they say, here, Clinton Township, here's your share, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay, now we have the option of going out and bonding for that or we have the option of paying it upfront.
Yes.
When we can, we pay it upfront to avoid the interest.
Yes.
Okay.
And the bond costs, there's costs with issuing bonds. And so those two things, we try to avoid the costs and the issuance costs and the interest, yes.
Okay, so what is our total debt based upon the?
Total debt.
Debt that's been issued by the county.
But issued by the county, at 3/31/25, it'll be $40,585,000.
$40,000,000.
Yep.
Okay, so that is, we're, our share is that $40,000,000?
Yes.
Their overall?
Oh, I don't know, yeah.
Much bigger.
Sure is.
Another 75% added onto that, right? Okay. And then I wrote down the nine-twelfths, but I think you already covered that.
We talked about that, yep.
So it's important to recognize that we're, our fiscal year starts April 1st.
Yep.
We are paying all of our expenses up until, and we're using revenue sharing for the general fund.
Yes.
Where this really comes to fruition is in the police fund and the fire fund because that is 100% millage-supported.
Yep.
Not 100%.
Mostly, yeah.
Mostly millage-supported, I should say. So we have to make sure we have enough of a fund balance to meet that obligation until the revenue comes in.
Yes.
In the December collection, so from December 1st to February 28th.
Right, yep.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think that covers a lot, Trustee Wade.
Yeah, I just want to back up on a couple of things that we talked about here. And I found this out when I went to the court meeting. You talked about that million-dollar bond and I was under the.
Fund, a million-dollar fund.
Yeah.
Million-dollar fund. I was under the impression that there was a million dollars in there. Well, there's not, there's only about $300,000 in there. So, I mean, they lowered it down to 500, but really that 300, a briar drop lowered net. So it's, when you hear that, it's really not an actual million-dollar fund. So just so that people know that.
Yep, and that fund was depleted when the pandemic hit. No one was driving and no revenue was then coming into the court.
Right. And then, and then just to back up another step, because maybe you can tell the public this in 20 words or less. I remember a time when we were over, I think we went as high as 102% funded in the pension.
Yes.
And then Plant Moran came in and he kind of threw some red flags up and said there's a problem here. I think you remember that.
Yes.
Would that be due to a combination of more people drawing the pension and bad investment? Would you collaborate those two things together?
There's a number of factors. And then I'm going to ask Mary to, you know, piggyback on whatever I missed.
Okay.
But having served on the pension board, when I came in, the assumptions were too high. So in other words, we projected an assumed rate of return on our investments of like 7.5%.
And it was higher than that before. It was like 8.25% when I got here and I'm like, whoa, that's too high.
Okay, and so the actuaries and all the experience data that we have from all public pension plans is they weren't coming anywhere near 7.5%. Then, not just us, all public pension funds. So we had to lower that assumption down to 7.25%.
I think that's, it's at 7.25 now.
There's also this factor of because this is an ongoing plan, there's the amortization period. And the amortization period, whether it's open or closed, we had to change it to a closed amortization period because that is best practice. So that increased our required contribution. The other thing is, and this is happening all around, if you look at the number of retirees versus the number of people working, there are now more people collecting from the system and living longer than there are paying into the system.
Yeah, I can tell you that for pension, for police and fire pension, we have 100, at 3/31/24, 166 active members and then 246 inactive. Some, most collect, making, collecting benefits, some are deferred, but yeah, so.
So going forward.
Okay, then, then the other thing is the amount of income you're making from your investments. That was one of the big changes that we made. We changed our pension consultant because we had a pension consultant who had an investment strategy that wasn't reflective of the market and what we wanted was a more balanced portfolio. So we wanted somebody to say, okay, the best way to do this is the previous strategy was value is going to outperform growth over time. And I can't meet your assumptions in 10 years, but I can meet them in 20. Well, we know that uncertainty increases over time. We also know that the best way to do this is to have a balanced portfolio of value and growth, you know, stocks and bonds. And then we have the ability to access private equity markets and hedge funds as well. We were in too many alternative investments when the stock market was producing growth at the biggest period of growth outperforming value in the history of the stock market and we were mostly value, which is why we made the change in both our healthcare fund and our pension fund. Have a more balanced portfolio.
And the one additional assumption was mortality tables. We updated the mortality tables to something that was more current and it was more based on our actual, because they do the studies and actual results in our plan and we updated our mortality tables because people are living longer. So that had an effect as well.
Keep me out of that mortality. Going forward, the number you said that are paying into the system right now.
Yes.
That's the highest it'll ever be.
That's right.
Send that shot.
Not in police and fire pension.
Oh, I thought they're not paying no more.
Because they're still, it's still open.
Oh, okay. Oh, MERS, okay. So in order for us to keep solvent, we have to do better investment? Is that a correct statement?
Yes, in part, yes.
That is the goal.
Better investment.
Yes.
And make sure we backfill. Like you, you said you're making a double.
Yes, make the additional contributions, yes, yep. Plus, once you get the more money in there, they can invest it more aggressively than we can, than the treasurer is able to, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
You're safe, thank you.
For instance, we used to make that contribution in October. We now make it as soon as we pass the budget.
Yeah.
Because Treasurer Iello can, you know, if it's, if it's sitting there not in the pension fund, then he's limited by Public Act 20 as to what he can invest it in, which are only the safest investments, which then don't likely produce as high a yield. And so then getting into the pension fund earlier, they can put those dollars to work faster. That wasn't 20 words or less.
It sure wasn't.
I tried.
But it's a healthy discussion.
Yeah, it is.
So.
All right, so this, I'm now figuring out procedure here. So this is a public hearing?
Technically, it is, so all of our ordinances are a two-step process, a public hearing.
I'm figuring out what step we're in.
And then adoption. We've implemented this several years ago to say, this is the biggest thing that we do. So we should do it in a two-step process similar to where we do our ordinances. And so we can consider this a public hearing.
All right, so do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
I thought in the past, we hold it open so that we're still in the public hearing setting when we go to the next meeting. Then we close the public hearing and then we would vote to adopt.
I think that's what we did last year.
I was just trying to figure out the process where we're at in this process.
I thought we were closing it today, so, because this is the second meeting.
Next, next board meeting, we have to do two things. We have to adopt the changes to the existing budget year.
Correct.
And approve the budget for '25, '26.
Correct.
Fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay, any comments from the public? Okay, we close a public comment and.
So there is one thing that's not in this budget that doesn't have an effect on the bottom line, but the police social worker that was approved last board meeting is not in here. But it's going to be an equal grant revenue and cost. So I will make that change in the ensuing, the weeks in between, but it's not going to have any effect on the bottom line. I'm just going to put money in for each of those. So when we start, it's not going to be, I believe till next year, not till April that they'll start, so.
It's not going to affect the net position.
Correct.
Of the budget.
Correct, yeah, I just want to have the money in there.
Public comment, yes, sir?
Is public comment just for this or forever?
So during public comment, we need you to step to the microphone.
Just on this side.
But it's for this item.
It's just for this item or?
Yes. Oh, 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 on other issues, aside from this. Yes, that's at the end and we have a comment card. Our police captain will drop you, drop you the form to fill out. And public comment on non-agenda items is at the end of the meeting. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, our finance team, once again.
Great job.
We appreciate your efforts. And we also appreciate the fact that we did things a little bit differently this year. We had a session for all of the board members where we had not just the two of you there, we brought in every single department. And I think that was helpful.
For all of us, yeah.
For all of us, so that if there was a question about department operations, they could ask it of the actual department head. If there was a budget question, they could ask it of the two of you.
Yep. Yeah, I agree, absolutely, yes. I appreciate that you came. And I know you all have other things you have to do, so it was, it was nice to have the support, so.
Okay, so if board members have questions between now and the next meeting, you would like them to email those questions to you.
Yes, yes.
Not that they're limited, not that they can't talk about it.
Oh, no, no, I just want to make sure I have the answer.
We're adopting the budget, but it's good so you know what the questions are so that you can do the research to make sure you've got good answers.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you both for your presentation and your work in putting all of this together. That will take us to, and by the way, the public hearing is left open and so members of the public, they have the ability to email those questions in as well. And so they can mail them actually to supervisor@clintont township.com. It's probably the best way to go and then I can funnel those questions to the finance office. Item number five, request approval to place donor recognition signage on inclusive playground fence. Madam Clay.
Dear members of the board, the Department of Public Services requests approval to produce and install signage along the fencing of the inclusive playground to acknowledge the individuals, organizations, and businesses that contributed to its construction. The Inclusive Playground Committee has proposed this addition and provided a list of donors deserving of recognition. We seek your approval now to ensure the signs are installed before the grand opening on April 4th. This request does not require budget amendments and there are sufficient funds in the inclusive playground budget to cover the expense. Attached is a conceptual drawing illustrating the signs. Based on their contributions, donors are categorized into three tiers, each receiving a sign at the main gate, with additional signage possibly at secondary gates depending on their total, on their donation level. Thank you for considering our request. I am happy to provide any further information or clarification you may need and I look forward to your favorable response. Sincerely, Brett Middlestout, Assistant Project Manager for the Department of Public Services.
Well, we're all anticipating the opening of the inclusive playground. This was started as a committee that was formed by the board, but they said, go out and raise the money for it. And so we started with private donations, received grant funding from the state and then as the costs continued to escalate, because construction costs were going up dramatically, the board said, it's just going to continue to escalate if the board doesn't chip in. We use federal infrastructure money and we did have a general fund commitment to the inclusive playground. But because this was a donor effort, the committee would like to recognize many of those big donors. So it needs board approval. Trustee Cress.
How much did the township kick in as far as, aside from the real estate? How much did we kick in as far as monies?
I don't have that figure.
Approximately, is it $400,000 or more?
No, it's definitely not more. It was, I think, between 250 and 350.
I think Mary Bender has a, she might.
I'm like, approximately $350,000.
Okay.
I think it was less than that.
I think it was less than that, but for a round number, approximately 350.
Thank you. And the placards in this, in this picture depicts the size that's going to be on the, on the, on the gate?
How would you refer to it?
Though, I would say it's, it depicts pretty close to the size. We're working with the contractor, um, you know, signed contractors right now, but the total for all the signs is less than $1,000.
Okay. Is there going to be one for the taxpayers of Clinton Township? Because we donated $350,000?
So, um, that was something I was going to speak with Supervisor Gilliam, because we were, didn't know if we wanted to thank the board for debt or the taxpayer. So, we were going to talk about that, actual, how we were going to word that.
Okay. Well, it's the taxpayers' money. I'm, if I, if I had, if I was asked, I would say the taxpayers of Clinton Township. So, thank you.
I like it. So, we need a motion to, a motion to approve donor recognition for the inclusive playground.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
And to install the signage? Is that what, and to install?
Yeah. DPW will install it.
Uh-huh. Okay, I'm sorry. So, trustee Metuzak, you made the motion, and Treasurer Aiello seconded that?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
A roll call.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Okay. Item number six, Fire Department overtime budget.
Dear board members, it has come to my attention that the Fire Department's overtime budget for the 2024-25 is in need of a budget amendment. I'm requesting the approval of a budget increase of $50,000 for the projected end of the quarter period. The increase in this year's overtime budget is due primarily to the following circumstance: shift overtime due to a decrease in overall staffing. We are actively pursuing viable candidates for the three positions that are currently open. Finance Director Ms. Heine has advised that the funds to cover this overage are available in the fire fund. Thank you for your time and consideration with this matter. Respectfully submitted, John Gallagher, Fire Chief.
Chief, want to, anything you wanted to add to the letter?
No, sir. Just, uh, the letter states, this is based on a shortage of personnel this time. As we are actively pursuing those individuals, potential to fill those positions, uh, just as it is nationally and across the state of Michigan as well, we're struggling to find a candidate to fill those positions. We are having conversations to, uh, look at, uh, procedural changes, potential to fill those positions, and those conversations do continue.
Questions from the board?
Any question?
Uh, Treasurer Aiello?
Uh, Chief, um, that $50,000, what timeframe do you think that will carry you till?
Our intention is through the end of the month here, through March 31st. Uh, this will cover the, the shortage of the personnel, and also, we have training that's going on, as well as the end of the year with PTO potential usage. Uh, for those figures, it could be utilized by the members.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Further discussion from the board, from the public? Ready for a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion to approve the changes to the overtime budget. Okay. Uh, Treasurer Aiello, and supported by?
Wade.
Trustee King.
King.
Trustee King. Okay. Further discussion? A roll call, please.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And that brings us to public comment. So, members of the public wishing to address the board? Uh, three minutes, uh, any subject? So, William Pollack from South Nunley. Yes.
Uh, good evening. My name is William Pollack. I live on South Nunley between Kelly and the Harrington Drain. Um, we've had an ongoing water main project since, I think, early October. Um, our road condition, as some of you probably know, this past Monday with the big thaw, it was horrendous, to say the least. Uh, several cars got stuck. My car particularly got bonded out probably half the way down the road. Uh, I have an electric vehicle, or plug-in electric vehicle, so the battery is on the bottom of the vehicle, so it's very, uh, potential dan, damage to the vehicle. Air, yeah, anything. So, um, we've had problems with this project since probably it started. The contractor, I don't believe, is, is probably one of the best contractors. He probably could have hired to do the job. Uh, trash on the road, parking of their equipment, uh, disregard to our leaving or coming to and from our homes, parking their vehicles, their trailers, their equipment, anywhere they please. Uh, basically, making us drive on the poorest part of the roads. Um, uh, I have hundreds of pictures. I have wonderful neighbors that, you know, are, we're all at our wits' end. There's been days when we haven't had water, uh, due to freezing because they have to constantly drain water. Uh, part of the problem with the road, I believe, is because of the drainage of water on both sides of the road. My, my ditch personally, in front of my house, uh, the other day was full of water, almost cresting over onto my driveway. Uh, they filled in the ditch next to me. Uh, there's no drainage on the other side of me, so any rain or water that we get is going to fill my ditch and then deteriorate my road, my driveway, and my, my property. None of this has been addressed. Uh, they did address the road on Friday. They finally put limestone down in the beginning of the road. It's better. Uh, actually, today it was even better than yesterday, because, or better than the weekend, because they bulldozed a lot of it and straightened it out. Before that, you could drive maybe two miles an hour without, uh, damaging your suspension on your car. So, uh, still not perfect. I don't expect to be perfect, but the company, from my understanding, was supposed to maintain the road for the whole duration of the project. Up until Friday, they had really done nothing. Our road hasn't been graded. There hasn't been anything put down. At one point, I couldn't even get my driveway because it was so much ice on the road that I couldn't even pull it in. It just spun the tires. I almost went in the ditch twice trying to get my vehicle into the driveway. So, I, I wanted the board and everybody to know that this is a problem. Uh, I invited Mr. Gammelham to the, to the street. I don't know if he's ever visited since I invited him. I called him on several occasions, and he never replied, unfortunately.
Oh, I, I have replied. I have replied. My deputies replied, and I've replied.
Yes, your deputy, Mr. O'Leary, has replied to me, but I called you twice. I talked to, I left a message on your machine, and I talked to your secretary, whoever answers the phone. And I actually, I tried to get an appointment. She said she wouldn't get an appointment to meet with you uh, this week, and you never called me back.
Okay. So, I haven't called you back, but I did email you back.
Well, you emailed me once.
We thought it was a, uh, we thought it was a project with the, um, with the Department of Roads.
Yeah, you, you deferred me to the, uh, Lecon County Road Commission, I understand.
And then, we figured out that it was our project, and so then, we started doing the digging.
Well, yeah, Mr. O'Leary was very helpful, and he did reply. Uh, again, I, I wish you would have replied to me personally, besides referring me to the road commission. And again, I called you twice, and you never bothered to call me back.
Well, it's, we, you've had response from my office. And so, we will continue to work with you on this, and we will continue to work with our public services. And in fact, we'll probably call you to make some clarifications on, uh, because you listed a number of items.
Yes.
But they're not necessarily questions, so we'll call you to clarify, so we make sure we understand.
Well, yeah, I mean, like you said, my ditch in front of my house. If it, if we get a lot of rain, where's the water supposed to go?
Yep. Understand.
I mean, they've damaged, I don't know how many of the culverts in our, in our, on our street, and again, where's all this water supposed to go? It's supposed to be 50 degrees in a couple of days, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your time.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, Sam Bushell.
Sam Bushell, 1-8546 Whelan. Um, I had predicted this was going to happen, but at the new dental surgical center on 15 Mile Road that I am the nearest house to, their dumpster now, they have never closed the lid. They had the upper lid open, and as I predicted, it has now grown, it has, as of today, it is spouting out the top. It's over the top of the dumpster, and that's medical waste into the neighborhood, right across from the group facility. And God knows what kind of chemicals they're storing in there either, because it never went to the, to the planning commission or anything, or to this board. And there, again, there's supposed to be, there's supposed to be a dumpster enclosure there all the way back from when it was McDonald's, and it's unacceptable. The other one is a thank you for, got the answer on, on the, uh, property that was, uh, their site plan was totally completed now, and their, their parking is supposed to be on cement on the adjacent property. This is by Detroit Diesel. And obviously, it's not, it's, they have a parking lot, a dirt parking lot out in front of the fence, which was not supposed to be there, which there, again, you confirmed, and there, again, that's what the board approved. And they've actually been, their, their site plan now is complete to what you approved, and it's still an, an, an empty lot. It's, it's not listed as a business. It's an empty lot. Because nothing, you, you approved a site plan in the Grossback Improvement District that we, we citizens paid for that whole over, you know, the, we had a company to fix it up, and this is an eyesore. The businesses on either side of this do have parking lots. They do have grass. They do have all the stuff that is, this particular property has a site plan that doesn't have a building, doesn't have drainage, doesn't have a dumpster, and, but it's definitely not supposed to have. There, again, as you confirmed, no parking lot in front of the fence. This morning, or today, there was about 13 cars parked there, and at least one vehicle that was actually stored there, a truck. So, I'm not going to, uh, three minutes won't do it. I'm just saying, drive by it and see it, and realize this is not, this isn't an old site plan. This is one that just completed in the last month. So, it's, because it's, it's from, you know, it's what you've been approving, and, and they, I don't think anybody wants medical waste popping out of the top of this dumpster that I predicted was going to happen. They've only been open a couple of weeks. God knows if they get busy, because now, today, they had the most cars there as possible. But, uh, if it gets busier, we're going to have a lot of stuff flying around the neighborhood if we don't get that dumpster enclosure now. Thank you.
One more. Leonella Weir?
Leona.
Leona.
Leona. Okay.
Hi. Yeah, I'm Leonella Weir, and I concur with this gentleman. Uh, the day that those people started working, I went home and said to my brother and sister, if they don't know what they're doing, they need to be taken off. I don't know how they ever got the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public, uh, comment, and, uh, motion to adjourn is in order.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Moved by Treasurer Aiello.
Second.
Supported by Clerk Meltzer. Roll call, please.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Motion passes.